All right, you guys, let's get this December 12th, 2023 city council meeting underway. Tracy, could we have roll call, please?
Bermal?
Aye.
Harrington?
Here.
Sittig?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Whason?
Here.
Thank you all. Our first item on the agenda is swearing in of newly elected and reelected council members. It's Tracy Mulcahy will do the honors for us.
May I pick who goes first?
Brian, you were here first. How about we do that?
So this is our dot. This is. I'm going to read to you and you'll just read back, repeat back to me. So raise your hand. I state your name.
Aye, Brian Legel.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability.
And I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties.
Discharge all the duties.
Of the Office of City Councilor in North Liberty, Iowa.
Of the Office of City Councilor in North Liberty, Iowa.
As now or hereafter, required by law.
As now or hereafter, required by law.
Congratulations. Are you going in order to appear, Mr.?
Yes. Paul?
We have Brent also.
Well, Brent's already here. He's done this. We're just going to save him for the last. Although he did get here before Paul, I'd see what you're saying, so no.
I didn't know between you.
No, no.
Ready?
Yes.
Raise your hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
Aye, Paul Park.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability.
And that I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties.
Discharge all the duties.
Of the Office of City Councilor in North Liberty, Iowa.
Of the Office of City Councilor of North Liberty, Iowa.
As now or hereafter, required by law.
As now or hereafter, required by law.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Are you ready? Yes, I'm here. Raise your hand. Repeat after me. I state your name.
Aye, Brett Smith.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability.
That I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties.
Discharge all the duties.
Of the Office of City Councilor in North Liberty, Iowa.
Of the Office of City Councilor in North Liberty, Iowa.
As now or hereafter, required by law.
As now or hereafter, required by law.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Brian, Paul, thank you very much for running and congratulations on being here tonight. This is a great time for us in the weeks ahead as we turn the calendar. You all are welcome to stick around if you would like to, to get a taste of what these guys have to, what they've signed up for for the next four years, or you're absolutely free to go. So congratulations, you guys. All right, everybody sticking around. Item four is approval of the agenda, and I don't think there's any changes to it. So could I have a motion for approval, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item five is our consent agenda. A lot of things on there. A great question asked earlier. Any other questions or reasons to pull things off of the consent agenda? Seeing that, could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved. Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any questions? Roll call, or on, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item six is a public comment, and this is time for anyone in the audience to make any comments or suggestions to council that are already not on our agenda tonight. Now's your time. All right, just kidding. I will close the public comment. Item seven is Josiah, our engineer's report, please.
Thank you. We've got a couple of projects up later on the agenda for bid consideration. Couple of updates on projects and construction, starting with City Hall. The big news is the long-awaited electrical switchgear was delivered last week to the site. That was kind of an unknown of where it was and how long it was going to take. So that was great news. So as that gets installed, that means that the mechanical units can get connected, the elevator can go ahead and get installed, and ultimately the project in the building can be finished out to get ready for occupancy. On the exterior, most of the work in the plaza is winding down. There's still a couple of things to be done, some metal paneling and some metal flashing on the overhang, but a lot of that's kind of getting buttoned up for the winter. And then within the building, some of the big items are flooring and glass walls and doors being installed on the second floor. And then downstairs, there's a lot of like detail and finishing work starting to go, like acoustical panels and finishing on the walls and the trim and things like that. Community center roof, that was an item that was part of the consent agenda to release final pay, retainage, and acceptance of that project as complete. Rancho Way Phase Five, we did have our walkthrough of the project last week with the DOT. DOT sends staff members to come and review the project once all the work's complete. We walked through it with ourselves, city staff, the DOT staff, and the contractor. Walked the whole site, look at everything. They've got a couple of items that they sent us for some plant material warranty replacements and some sidewalk measurement forms, so it went really well, which is great news. PCI was the general contractor on that, and he was really impressed with how they buttoned things up. So we'll need to follow up with them, and once complete, the DOT, once we're done following up with the DOT, they'll issue a letter which says the field work is complete, and that will start the audit, which every project gets audited after that. In design phase, I was going to touch on one project, Centennial Park. The design, the DD phase middle has been made, and that went to the city staff for review. It also went out to a third-party, third-party construction cost estimator. So they're doing their own independent construction cost estimate of what this is going to, what this project's going to cost. That's supposed to be back next week, and then Shyve Hattery will meet with city staff to do a full review, plus review of those cost estimates and see the big picture of where we're at before we go into the final phase, which would be CD plans. And no change on the schedule. That's still designed through early next year bidding, and then construction on-site is proposed to begin after the 2024 Blues and Barbecue event. And that, that is it.
Thank you, Josiah. Any questions for Josiah? Item eight, Mr. Hoyer, our city administrator report.
Thanks. Just a couple of things for me this evening. First, as you all know, this is our last meeting of the year, and so we did try to work diligently to get a few things on this agenda. That's why you're seeing some of the final plats. Credit to Grant and Rust, working close with the developer in those cases to get these things on so that they can continue to move forward. Of course, we have the resolution that'll allow us to pay bills. Even though we're not meeting, we still have to conduct business, and so that, I think, is pretty self-explanatory on the agenda. I would note for the public that the city office's holiday schedule is that we'll be closed on the 25th, 26th for Christmas, and then the New Year on the 29th, and the first, it's a Friday and a Monday. And then lastly, I just, this has been in the news quite a bit, but we haven't met since we were awarded the CAC grant, so I thought I'd mention it to folks. We were pretty, pretty thrilled with the $900,000 award. They were obviously very supportive of our project. Once, since we've sent that notice out to folks and are letting folks know that we need additional donations to cover the gap, we've seen a lot of activity. And I bring this up because I think in the last week, we've received close to a dozen, if not more, smaller donations, ranging from $15 to $100. We actually did receive a $5,000 one, which I would consider a bigger donation. But my point is, is those grassroots, small donations add up, and they are helpful. So if folks are looking here at the year-end to make a donation, know that no gift is too small for this project, and we appreciate, appreciate that support. So as Josiah said, we're moving on. We have 90 days to make up the, it's about $100,000 gap in fundraising now. Well, it is $100,000 based on the difference between the million-dollar request from CAC and the 900 that they gave us. So I'm confident we can do that. We have a few big asks out there, and we'll continue to beat the bushes on, on some of the, the smaller requests. And again, thanks to Jillian and Nick and their team for really bringing this project home in terms of fundraising. That's what I have this evening. Mayor?
Thanks, sir. Any questions for Ryan?
Okay. We got a few things on my report here. I'm just going to, I guess, get through some of the things that I've been doing recently. JEXA Policy Board met last Friday, and we just, we just worked through who's going to be chair, vice chair, and it's North Liberty's turn to be the vice chair at the policy board. And as Ryan mentioned, I was in Des Moines last week with them all, and just impressed with the scale of support that this community has provided to this next-stage project. Those that went with us locally weren't just residents of North Liberty, but they were organizations that benefited or helped us tremendously. So it goes without saying, grateful for their support. So with a little bit of sadness, I have a, and happiness, I have a couple of things to hand out here tonight to you guys. Ms. Harrington, do you mind standing up for us?
We wanted to officially thank you for your service to our community, and to say that I'm going to miss you is tremendous understatement. I very much enjoyed you being here. You bring something to our council meetings that has been missing and will be missing afterwards, and I'm very grateful for your service. And I know you're already doing big things, and we're just lucky that you live here in North Liberty.
Thank you.
So thank you so much, okay?
Thank you.
Ms. Bermal, you want to come to me, or should I come over to you?
No, I can.
We can start the telethon right here. Your time was short with us, and, but it was intense. Our night's not over yet. You've threatened to raise all the money for Centennial Park. Yeah, yeah. Your passion and your dedication to this city is very apparent. Some of it's very much on the surface, and everybody knows it, but I know you do it a lot behind the scenes to support this community, and that's going to continue whether you're sitting there or you're, you're back at home. And we are extremely grateful for the time that you gave to us, and I think there'll be more in our future. So.
Undoubtedly.
Thank you. And I'm going to stay standing, but the five of you can all just sit because this is a first for me because I get to say this to you all. We're obviously losing Ashley and Rakesha tonight, but the three of you that are staying and to the two that are leaving, you were a special group of counselors to me, and for that, I'm extremely grateful. Brian, Brent maybe has a little taste of this. You know how difficult it can be when not all counselors are here, when counselors don't listen to and respect and appreciate each other's differences up there, and you all did that. As a council, you came here with information, you shared it, and you communicated, and for that, you were able to push each one of our meetings forward and to help our community. I'm very grateful for your service as a group, and I know that the city staff is as well because you did a lot of heavy lifting over these last two years. So thank you all very much as well.
All right, item 10 is our council reports, and if anyone has anything to share of what they've been doing in our community, now's the time.
I'll start.
Please do.
I had an opportunity to join the North Liberty Youth Council at their meeting to just talk about some ideas that they want to see in the future and give them some support. So to all of you, I kind of volunteered you to continue the charge, which I know you guys will do. Very passionate about young people in this community, and I think it's high time that we have a council that's active and they are eager to get out there and do more things. So I'm excited to continue to support them in any way that I can. And to my fellow council members, this is bittersweet saying goodbye, but I'm only a phone call away, and I know how it is to see such a full audience out here in the council chambers. So every once in a while, I promise to pop in and just stare at you all. But no, it has been a joy, a pleasure being able to serve with all of you. I've learned so much more about our community, and I am just happy to be a resident here. I'm so glad that I got to experience this as you being the mayor too. And with just all the city staff, I can't be more proud of living and being a part of a city that is continuing to grow, and this actually shows the, the effort and the teamwork that goes behind it. So this has been a fabulous experience for me, and it's not farewell, it's until next time when my schedule allows me to do more. So thank you all for having me, and to the community for voting me in, but I really have appreciated it.
I guess I'll go next. It's a hard act to follow. I'll try to keep it short, and I'm actually trying to hold it together because this is a bittersweet moment, but I have never really had a hometown before, and this is the first time in my 40 years where I have actually felt like I have a home. And I'll be that a little bit more personal than you perhaps need, but this experience being on council has made me fall even more in love with North Liberty. Our staff is incredible. I don't think the, the country has a better staff running it than we have here in North Liberty. I, I think you all don't understand how incredible that you are, and the folks up here, I mean, I consider you not just part of my life in this small occasion, but I also consider you guys really good friends from this. So I, I thank you for the opportunity and, and really truly cherish these moments. So I, I'm excited what's to come. I'm going to fundraise the heck out of the, what, 89 days that we have left to fundraise? We're going to do it. So I, I'm going to be in your back pocket, obviously, anything that you need, and yeah, till then.
Anything else, council members?
Mayor, I would, I want to thank both Rakesha and Ashley for their courage to run. It's, it's a very hard thing to put yourself out there to your community and think, you know, are there more people that I could gain support from than just my neighbors and just my core group of friends? And both of you went well beyond that, well beyond the votes that were cast for you. You put your heart and souls into this city, and you did it before you came here, and I know that both of you are going to do that after you leave here, and that's what has made you great counselors and good friends. I appreciate the service as a citizen and somebody that's up here that knows the work that goes into it. I'm very appreciative of both of you, so thank you. I would also echo the fundraising campaign. I too am thinking of ways, and maybe you can give me a few ideas on your way out for us to get there. And then just lastly, the Better Together 2030 Quarter Four meeting was held in North Liberty about a week or so ago at Field Day. They were very impressed with the space. It was nice to have them in town. Thank you, Ryan, for coming. Ryan got to share all of the great things that were, that are happening here in North Liberty with the group, and they were just, they're amazed. You know, some folks hadn't been through here in about a month or so, and they're like, it's, it's crazy, if you haven't been to North Liberty for a month, how much it changes and how much it grows in that short amount of time. So Ryan, we appreciate that for you coming and cheerleading. Thank you.
All right. I have a whole card.
You do. I, I knew you were not going to be here tonight.
Yep, so I just wanted to, you know, kind of go along with everybody else, thank Ashley for stepping up and filling a slot in the council and really for her enthusiasm. It's, it's really good to have some viewpoints of someone younger in, from the city, kind of like me on the council. Your insight into the housing issues is, is very helpful. I really appreciate that. And, and now that we will not be in violation of open meeting clause, you can be my real estate expert. And I'd also like to thank Rakesha for her years of service some, through some very rough times. So there was a lot of things that went on in the first couple of years, and I really appreciate your advocacy for the youth of our community, and your opinions on issues were very helpful as the council worked through our problems, or through problems and to come up with solutions that really could try and benefit everybody. So I really appreciate that. I went to, we had emergency management meeting for the month. The, the big topic was working on the budget, which will be a generally flat other than whatever the county is doing for a salary and benefits, and that'll get published probably in January. The staff has been doing a lot of training, and the county is also working on updating their hazard mitigation plan, and that's required by FEMA, and they have to do it every five years, and it's basically a plan to reduce or eliminate risks in the community in, such as like natural disaster-type things, and it's required every five years. The plan is, you assess the risks in your community, develop mitigation strategies for that, and then implement a plan to do that. And once you've done that, you're then eligible to ask for funding from FEMA for hazard mitigation, I think. So you have to participate in that. I think Tracy's the North Liberty representative for that. So it's actually a really long process. You have to have the whole plan done. It goes to the state, then it goes to the federal government, then it comes back through the state to the county, and then it will eventually get to the councils, hopefully next fall.
Thanks, Brian. Anything else?
I'm not going to say anything else that nobody else already said, so, but I do, I do want to thank both of you. You will be missed. Thanks for your service. I will note, too, I went to the CID Legislative Breakfast Tour on Saturday. Ryan was there, and I was, I hope you got out of it what I did, and it's, if you have an opportunity next year, if they do it again, I would highly recommend it. It's just a, a great way to see what the airport is doing up there, what plans they have for the future and positioning this area and for some really good things, so.
Thanks, Eric. All right, item 11 then is our FY25 budget framework and guidance, and item eight is discussion on FY25 budget framework and guidance. Ryan, I'm going to let you lead us on here.
Thank you. We try to do this, and I think we have been successful, to do something like this every year, pre-budget discussions with the city council. We used to call this a strategic planning session, but really I like to refer to it as just taking the temperature of the group to make sure we're not missing anything, and if we are, get some feedback. And also taking just a couple of minutes to remind you of some timelines and some other things that are happening in terms of budget. So I would just, I'm just going to walk through each page, and we'll just have a few comments on each, but I want to call your attention to the timeline. Particularly, I want to point out the highlighted dates in there, January 16th and 23rd. Those will be our two main budget sessions with the city council. If we need additional sessions, we would schedule that later into, later in January or early February. But then after that point, the timing starts getting a little bit tight, and you might ask yourself, well, why is the timing tight, Ryan? The budget's not due till April 30th. Sorry, that sounded a little sarcastic. But while the, while the date is pushed out one month from last year, there are a number of steps that are required to be done by the county, which requires us to have our data to the county by March 15th. In fact, the, the league is suggesting all cities get their information to the, to the county earlier than the 15th, which is, is actually the previous due date of the budget. So in theory, one could argue that if to have our budgets done sooner now, these years than we did previously, but I digress a bit. Anyway, the, so then we get that information to the county on the 15th. These dates aren't in here, by the way. I'm just going rogue a little bit. And then on the 20th, the county has to have everything, mailing to every resident in the county with every agency's budget summary on there, basically. So that, it'll be interesting to see how that unfolds. Five days to do that work seems unrealistic, so we'll, we'll see. At the end, at any rate, we should have our process wrapped up well before the March 15 deadline. Moving on, just the, the meeting objectives here, the kind of the, the framework objectives. I'm not going to go through these, but again, just taking the temperature, showing some progress that we've made on previous years and what current, future years look like. Challenges and opportunities. We probably could have scratched off the opportunities on this page, but I'm an optimistic, so I wanted to keep it on there. In terms of the general fund budget and, and how the rollback will impact us, we have a couple of things happening this year. The rollback is dropping 8.3%, which is the highest drop since the inception of this, of, of the rollback in 1976. We're adding on to that, in 2021, the legislature decided to slowly cut out the backfill credits, and so we are going to receive $70,000 in general fund, less revenue in general fund revenue this year than we did last year. When you accumulate debts since FY22, it's about $210,000 less in those credits. And then, of course, you have Iowa House File 718, which we've talked about, which will, if we see growth in our value, most likely that growth will ratchet down the tax rate, so we'll have potentially less revenues to deal with. We do have some other options in that area, in, for example, using some other levies that we haven't used before. We talked about this back in September, so I won't spend a lot of time on it. And then just some of the challenges that we've seen with higher costs as we're meeting with, as we're meeting with our department heads, talking about chemical costs or equipment costs, whether that be trucks and/or parts for the wastewater plant, all those, and you've probably seen it in your personal and work lives as well, all those costs are, are going up. It'll be interesting, and hopefully we'll see some positive news when we get the cost back from the third-party estimator that Josiah mentioned earlier for, for Centennial. Hopefully, we're, we're on, on pace there. But those are just some concerns as we, as we move into this fiscal year. We've seen from a, from a, like a vehicle or equipment wait time, some of those have shortened. However, the big trucks, the, for example, a big snowplow is probably a couple of years out yet from, from order date. I suspect it's the same, Brent, probably in the fire world.
Yes, it is.
As well, so. But while, while those are challenges, we have a great team, as you all know, and we'll work through those and hope, and will present to you a reasonable budget here after the first of the year. Some staffing requests that we know will be forthcoming. Tracy and I, Tracy and I have talked about this position for a couple of years. We believe we're at a point where we need a finance officer to, to start assisting with some things. We'll have more information about that as we get a little closer, and then continuing to build out that staffing plan in the fire department. Of course, we have the three positions that are funded by the FEMA, or the SAFER grant right now, but we need to plan for that because this will be year two, and year three, that funding goes away, looking at expanding the part-time program and then bringing on a fire marshal to, to full-time. Just wanted to touch base on the American Rescue Plan Act. We still have, as you can see, about $830-plus thousand remaining that we have not awarded or allocated. The columns or the, the categories that you see where some of that money's listed, those are just ideas or placeholders. We can talk more about that as we move forward as well. Remember, the last two years, we used this money to supplement the general fund for our social service funding. So that's, that, we can't do that forever. We're going to have to, to figure out how to eventually wean ourselves off. We're going to have to figure out how to eventually wean ourselves off of those funds. The next three slides, I think, are pretty impressive. I'm not going to go through these projects one by one. They're in front of you to read. But recently completed projects, just doing some math here, we have 10 of those that equate to about $6 million in investment in the community. Projects in progress, this is a pretty big number here. We have 13 of those, many of them significant, and those equal over $25 million. So all told, projects recently completed or in progress, about $31 million. So some significant investments of mostly local money, but this obviously includes some of the grants we've been talking about and private fundraising for Centennial. And then projects identified in the FY25 capital improvement plan. This, we have not really touched the, this is from last year's capital improvements plan, so we haven't really gotten in there yet to talk to department heads and shape the CIP for this coming year. For example, the West Forever Green Road roundabout, that project's not going to happen. That was a placeholder, so we'll kick that can down the road. So we'll, this is really just to give you an idea of, you know, where we were at last year, what we were thinking. Plans change. This one will certainly change, and we'll have some discussion on that in January as well. And just a reminder, as you folks all know, but for our two new folks out in the audience, the first meeting in January will focus mainly on operational expenses. The second meeting then focusing on the capital projects. Just a check on our goals from '22 to '24. The first four you see there, we're making some great progress and/or have completed those already. We have not made any progress on the grant for energy efficiency programs, and I would just note that it's more of a bandwidth or a capacity issue. We just haven't had an opportunity to put a lot of time into that at this point. Social service funding, I mentioned this already here. Again, this is just to give you an idea of the last three years, what's been requested. You can see that number goes up dramatically in what's been awarded. That number also goes up, but not near as quickly as the requests go up. So again, a question you folks will need to be thinking about in the coming month. Maybe a nice conversation to have with your family over Christmas dinner is how much are we going to allocate in the FY25 budget? And then lastly, you know, is there, you've seen this, you've seen our facility plans, our strategic plan. You've been involved in adopting a lot of those. Is there anything we're missing as we head into FY25? Anything you would like to see added or considered, I should say, as we start to have some further conversations with our department heads?
I sent the two ideas. One that I've talked with a guy about for a number of years, and I know the background there. Again, I think that's more for budget discussion time on the addition of a 90-foot baseball complex with Quayle being the cheaper version of that. Those conversations have been had, and there's some baseline there. I understand the history there at Quayle, so I think that's one thing on the park side. But for me, there's, there still seems to be, there still is a lack of economic development drive or grant program or funding from our budget to help drive some economic development aside from the partnerships that we have with Think Iowa City and in the past with ICAD and our new partnerships now with the merger. So that's just something that I bring up, that I have felt that we can, we can control locally within our own, still partnering, of course, with our partners here in the region. But just something that, if not now, when do we begin to kind of have an investment or a pot or a pool or a grant or, you know, just entering that conversation? And that's hard, especially in a year like this, when we're looking at reductions and all the other needs with the departments. But that's, those were the two things that I brought up in the questions prior to council. So I thought I'd bring them up, bring them up here.
Great questions. Anything else that you guys would add? I mean, especially you two imparting shots, leaving the room.
I guess for me, I would like to see more in the economic development aspect, like some entrepreneurial project or support for people who want to start businesses here. Oftentimes, the startup cost is like the hardest part for them to even get their foot in the door. So if it's something that can be developed in that realm, I think it would be beneficial for this community as well. We're growing very fast, and I think it's a good place for people to, you know, have that home base for businesses, whether it's to start a restaurant or catering or something.
Only thing I'd like to add to that is I agree with you, and I also was really excited with the momentum that we had with the affordable housing initiatives. Would love to continue the discussion on that and make sure that we take that momentum and further it a little bit with some of our earmarked funds going into the future.
Anything else?
Yes. When I was looking through this, what caught my eye on the projects previously identified for fiscal year '25 was the Penn Street Bridge aesthetic enhancements. Things like that I don't see as a priority for me at this point. I think we need to be focused on functional things, making sure that we're funding social services and making sure that people have places to live. So I know that's something that North Liberty has always done, is make things look really nice, and I appreciate that. As we kind of work through these budget issues, I think we probably need to take a step back and see what's really important.
One more thing. I don't know if, I know with 2030, the better together stuff, childcare is always an ongoing discussion, and I don't know, you know, how much has been discussed internally, if that's a way to support folks as well or have them programmed there.
All right. Do you need anything else?
No, that's, these are great comments, and I appreciate, appreciate the feedback. And I think some of these, we will be able to also talk further about in the strategic planning session that we'll be planning for the March-April timeframe. Good stuff. Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, these next few months will be intense and thoughtful, and a little taste of this. Nice to exercise that muscle a little bit there. All right. Thank you all. Item 12 is our Parks and Rec Commission appointments. And in your packet, you'll see applications that have been received and would like to make those appointments. So item A is council's confirmation of those recommended appointments, please. Tracy, how do we do this? Do we need to, I forget, roll call?
Motion second and a voice vote.
Okay, sounds good.
Mayor, I'll accept or make the motion that we accept these two with your approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Do you guys have any questions about those?
Just thank you for everybody, Brian.
I agree. I agree. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Welcome aboard. Thank you all very much. Item 13 is the Fox Run Pond Trail Project, and item A is Resolution Number 2023-140. And this is a resolution accepting the bid and authorizing the execution of the contract for the Fox Run Pond Trail Project, North Liberty, Iowa. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
Move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Do you guys have any questions? Great feedback in our packet. Tracy, could I have a roll call, please?
Wason?
Aye.
Sittig?
Aye.
Bermal?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 14.
That was insane. This is my last meeting, geez.
I did that go to Wason.
Aye.
Can we move on now?
Yes.
Item 14 is the street maintenance facility remodel project, and item A is Resolution Number 2023-141. And this is a resolution accepting the bid and authorizing execution of the contract for the street maintenance facility remodel project, North Liberty, Iowa. Could I have a motion for consideration?
So move. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any follow-up questions after the information in our packet? Tracy, roll call, please.
Harrington?
Aye.
Sittig?
Aye.
Bermal?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries. Great job. Item 15 is our policy regarding payables for our council meeting, and item A is Resolution Number 2023-142. And this is a resolution establishing the policy for the payment of claims due to the cancellation of the second city council meeting in December of 2023. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. You've all done this once. Do you have any questions?
Boris? Right.
Tracy, roll call, please.
Sittig?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Bermal?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 16 is the urban renewal loan agreement, and this is Resolution Number 2023-143, a resolution setting the date for a public hearing on proposal to enter into an urban renewal loan agreement and to borrow money there under in principal amount not to exceed $6 million. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any questions about this? Tracy, roll call, please.
Bermal?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Sittig?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 17 then is the Diamond Dreams Agreement, and this is Resolution Number 2023-144, a resolution approving amended development agreement with DD Building LLC, and could I have a motion for consideration?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Do you guys have any questions? And just understand, we're moving the date on this one. All right. Tracy, could I have a roll call, please?
Smith?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Sittig?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Bermal?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 18 is Forever Green Road Signalization Project, and this is Resolution Number 2023-145, a resolution approving the acquisition of Right Away from Bowman Property LLC for the Forever Green Road Signalization Project. Could I have a motion for consideration?
So moved.
Second.
Seconded. You guys understand that one? Any questions? Tracy, roll call, please.
Harrington?
Aye.
Sittig?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Bermal?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 19 is Solomon's Landing Part IV Final Plat, and this is Resolution Number 2023-146, a resolution approving the final plat for Solomon's Landing Part IV in North Liberty, Iowa. Could I have a motion for consideration?
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions on this one? Tracy, roll call, please.
Harrington?
Aye.
Sittig?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Bermal?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 20 is Solomon's Landing Part II Final Plat and Surety Agreement, and this is Resolution Number 2023-147, a resolution approving the final plat and accepting surety for public improvements for Solomon's Landing Part II, North Liberty, Iowa. Could I have a motion for consideration?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? Tracy, roll call, please.
Sittig?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Bermal?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 21 is our franchise fee ordinance, and this is third consideration and adoption of ordinance Number 2023-27, an ordinance amending the Mid-American Energy Company, Interstate Power and Light Company, and Lynn County Rural Electric Cooperative franchise agreements to adjust franchise fees. Could I have a motion for consideration?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any final questions on this one? Tracy, roll call, please.
Smith?
Aye.
Bermal?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Sittig?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 22 is our fats, oil, and grease, and this is also a third consideration and adoption of ordinance Number 2023-28, an ordinance amending chapters 95 and 97 of the North Liberty Code of Ordinances, further limiting the discharge of fat, oil, and grease into the sanitary sewer system, codifying maintenance and record-keeping requirements of fat, oil, and grease recovery systems, and establishing permitting requirements and penalties for noncompliance. Could I have a motion for consideration?
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any last questions on this one? Tracy, roll call, please.
Wason?
Aye.
Bermal?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Sittig?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Motion carries. And item B there is Resolution Number 2023-148, and this is a resolution establishing fat, oil, and grease fog operation permit fee in the city of North Liberty, Iowa. Could I have a motion for consideration?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. You guys have any questions on that? All right. Tracy, roll call on our last resolution for the year. Oh.
Nope.
Oh, no, no. That's one ordinance.
Bermal?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Sittig?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries. And our last ordinance for the year, stormwater fees ordinance, and this is also third consideration and adoption of ordinance Number 2023-29, an ordinance amending chapter 100 of the North Liberty Code of Ordinances, establishing an equitable fee structure for stormwater utility services.
Yes, I'm sorry. For the stormwater ordinance, one thing that we need to note is that the ordinance that's set forth in your packet has been changed slightly for the enactment date, the effective date. Item number nine says that notwithstanding all of this, we're going to publish this according to law, and it will take effect immediately normally. Now it's adding, but in no case, not sooner than February 1st. There's additional time that's needed. My understanding is to get our systems to align with those requirements. So that document, notwithstanding why it gets published, is the ordinance, and so a motion to amend the ordinance to reflect the effective date that's set forth in the packet would be appropriate. So we have a motion to establish the ordinance, moved and seconded, and we're talking about it, then a motion to amend that, the effective date. Vote on amendment and then vote on ordinance would be my recommendation for the council to move forward. So all sorts of last votes for here. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve the third reading of the ordinance.
And I'll second that.
Awesome. Before we vote on that, we need to make a motion for an amendment?
So you can, and you can have your discussion now. As part of your discussion, one of you might, for example. You know, I think.
I would move that we change the date to the effective date in the packet, which is...
And if someone wants to consider that, you could.
Second it.
All right. We might want to have additional discussion on whether you think that's a good idea.
I got it from here.
All right. I'm not.
Please do.
So apologize for the confusion here. We have been working, as you all know, with our software company and have transferred several modules over. We're still waiting on the utility bill model, module, and our plan was to have that happen this month. Unfortunately, the company had some staffing issues, and so it wasn't going to happen this month, so it will happen next month so that for the February bills that go out later in February, the new software will be ready. And why that's important is obviously we'd have to double entry everything. It wasn't going to be efficient, and we thought that it would be easier to, because the bills will look different as well. They won't be on a postcard anymore.[1738.33] And so we suspect we'll get some questions about that. We may get some questions about a fee that's, a new fee that's on there. And so I thought just making both those changes at once made more sense than trying to split them apart. So thank you for, for that.